Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, October 12, 2020. Prior to our meeting this evening, I'd like to remind folks, anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form. They are in the foyer just outside this room. Fill that out, give it to our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, and we'll be getting you on either at the time of public participation or at the time the agenda item comes up. Also, I'm told that we have no online public comment submission forms, so we will have no online comments this evening. With that being said, I know we have one of our aldermen on Zoom, and that is our first ward, Carolyn. Can you hear me? Very good. Also, our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, is on the line. Lynn, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have not been told of Alderman Favors' absence this evening. He may be coming, he may be running just a tad late. We hope that he is with us tonight. In terms of our sixth ward alderman, Mike Verbic, yesterday he had an emergency appendectomy, went to the hospital. I talked to him about five o'clock this afternoon. He's at home already, resting comfortably, and so we wish Mike well. I asked him if he wanted to wrestle. He said no, but he also doesn't feel up to joining us tonight. So, we wish Mike well. We hope that Alderman Favors is able to be with us tonight. And with that, I will ask our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Verbic. Favors. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Today, across this country, we have many Americans who will join us in a moment by long distance in pledging allegiance to our country. Among our many citizens are those of Italian-American heritage. And on this day, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, we call special mention to those, our brothers and sisters of Italian-American heritage. With that, let us pledge allegiance to our flag. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight, item C, is approval of the agenda. I'd like to see if there are any members of the city council who would like any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. Hearing done, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Finukin. Discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as presented. We now move to public participation. We have no online requests. However, we have two folks in the audience who would like to speak to an item. I'd ask both Paul and Bessie to try to keep your comments to about three minutes or less. Our first speaker tonight is Bessie Cronopolous.
It'll take me longer to get up here than it did to speak. Don't move as fast as we used, Mayor. How you doing, council? Okay. Four items. Two questions, two statements, one question, and then one presentation. Number one, Alderman Perkins, I'd like to thank you for being at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It's rare that I see council members going in. It's good. It's great to see you doing that. I think it was a good learning experience.
Good to be there.
Interesting meeting. And I would also like to thank the DeKalb Police Department. I made them aware of a scam that they tried to scam me through the Illinois Department of Employment Services. There's a huge thing going on. Long story short, I contacted all my financials and the AG and the state's attorney and all the proper people, and of course PD, and they jumped right on it and posted something on the website to make people aware of that. So, if you get a plastic card that says, "Activate me," don't report that right away. So, the authorities are on top of it. The question was about the census. At some point in time, if you have a little bit of time today, it'd be nice to get a report to see how our census is doing. That last report, we weren't doing so well, as far as replies and so on, so it'd be interesting to see how that's going. And finally, I think each of you on council, you have a press release, and I would just like to introduce that, and we will be releasing that to all of the media, too. Good evening, council. As you likely know, Ward Five has a history of being a most active ward. The residents of Ward Five have always taken an interest in their community, often speaking out on a variety of issues and being involved in a variety of community initiatives and discussions. In talking among ourselves, a few of us have had an interest in gathering, virtually, of course, to discuss some concerns about our ward and our neighboring Ward Four as we share important South Fourth Street and Taylor Street. This meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 20, at 7:30 PM. Details of how to participate are included in the press release. We look forward to the participation, not only of our own council members from Wards Five and Four, but other members of council and citizens. Thank you, Bessie Cronopolous. You're included in council, too, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Bessie, I will discuss this a little bit with you later. I trust that you have communicated that meeting to both Alderman Perkins and Alderman McAdams.
This is actually the first I'm hearing about it.
Yeah, prior to tonight. The second thing is, is what I think even when we get on a virtual platform and city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think if we have more than a couple of aldermen, even the mayor, joining in and signing in, we are violating the Open Meetings Act. Or is that incorrect?
Do you mean participating in this conference?
Yeah.
I look at it this way. You don't lose your First Amendment rights to show up at this kind of event just because you're elected to be an alderman or a member of America. Where people get in trouble is aldermen are, you know, you go there and you watch and you learn and you listen and talk to people individually. That doesn't create an open meeting X. I'm sorry, excuse me. That doesn't create an open meeting X problem, but where you have to watch out for is, one, you start participating as an alderman into the discussion, and if it touches upon city business, then it's a fine line where you're potentially creating an issue where you could be in violation of the Open Meetings Act, depending on the circumstances and what is said. So, if you can go there and be quiet and not engage in the discussions about city business is one thing, but that's a very difficult thing to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Bessie. Okay. Paul, are you going to wait until we get to that item on the agenda to speak, or would you like to speak now?
No, I'm happy to wait.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So, there are no other folks who have indicated a desire to speak under public participation, so let's move along on the agenda. Item E, presentations, there are none tonight. Item Four, appointments, there are none this evening. Our consent agenda, item G, all items on the consent agenda are usually enacted by one motion unless a city council member desires that one be removed. Do I see anyone who would like to remove an item? If not, the two items on tonight's consent agenda, one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 28, 2020, and two, accounts payable and payroll through October 12, 2020, in the amount of $296,217.81. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Discussion? Roll call.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved as presented. We have one public hearing tonight, and I will open this public hearing at 6:12 PM. It's a public hearing on the formation of Special Service Area 30, consisting of parcel identification numbers 08-15-128-004. Also, eight, excuse me, 08-15-128-012. And 08-15-176-025, Hunter Ridge Brook Properties and 912 Edgbrook Drive. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Yes, sir. If you would go to the podium, identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and members of the council. My name is Steve Bauer. I'm an attorney with Melter, Portell &amp; Sell, and I'm speaking to you this evening on behalf of Hunter Ridge Brook Properties, LLC. I should begin by telling you that I was just literally engaged today and authorized to attend this meeting, but for at least the following three reasons, we respectfully submit that this hearing is premature, and for that reason, respectfully submit that the council continue this hearing for a period of at least 30 days. The first is that based on the information we have, and contrary to what is stated in the meeting agenda, there is no settlement agreement between Hunter Ridge Properties and the City of DeKalb that has actually been executed and therefore is effective. And as a result, if that's true, there is no waiver of a right by Hunter Ridge to object to the proposed special service area. Secondly, at least in one respect, it appears that the notice of this hearing is defective in that if the copy of the notice that's attached or linked to the city's meeting agenda is the complete notice, then there is no legal description provided, which, contrary to the special service area tax law, is a prerequisite or a necessary inclusion for such a notice of public hearing. And lastly, as I indicated at the outset, we were literally just engaged and as a consequence have not had the opportunity to review relevant background material and be knowledgeable enough to intelligently speak before you on an ongoing basis. So again, with respect, we ask that you continue this meeting for at least 30 days to afford us the ability to gain necessary information, communicate with appropriate city personnel, including the city attorney, whom my colleague reached out to in advance of this meeting, and as well as the city manager and anyone else that you may suggest or direct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Much of the background information that has been provided is a result of work that has been performed by our city manager, Bill Nicholas. And also, there's been quite a bit of publicity in the newspaper and in the media on this particular proposed formation of the special service area. Before we close the public hearing, I'd like to have city manager Nicholas make any comments if he would prefer to, and then we will close the public hearing, and we will take your request and put that into the record. Thank you very much. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. First, to Mr. Bauer's assertions, I know that he is not part of the firm that was represented during the settlement conferences and the settlement documents that were the springboard for this when the council first considered this back on September 14, and the insertion of a new legal firm at this stage, I think should not be a reason for the council to continue this. The council can be assured on the basis of what our city attorney has just assured me that you are on firm ground in proceeding as we had planned a month ago. This hearing is to give people the opportunity to voice opinion about the proposed SSA. The purpose, I will just read into the record, as you know, is to provide for the public safety and security improvements desired by residents of the Hunter Ridge Brook housing complex. The SSA was also designed to provide for the construction and maintenance of the proposed park at 912 Edgbrook once that building is razed. The 2019 EAV for Hunter Ridge Brook Properties was $2,120,952. The maximum SSA levy in any given year can be, according to statute, up to 5% of the total EAV. The initial levy for the SSA is to be $100,000, which is just within that 5% threshold, and once levied and received that tax, those tax proceeds can be used to offset the costs of a variety of different things, such as police services, cameras, lighting, other security measures. We recommend that you continue with this hearing.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? If not, I would like to close this.
You're right. I'm sorry. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carolyn. You're usually over here to the right, and you raise your hand.
Yeah, may I speak?
Please.
I agree with the city manager, and I would like to ask the city manager which firm was represented at those settlement conferences, and I have a follow-up question as well.
Matthew Rose is not with us tonight. John Donahue is. Matthew Rose was the point person for our firm, Donahue &amp; Rose. The gentleman's name is Ashman, and I don't, off the top of my head, remember the full name of the legal firm. But this is a person who had been involved in court with us on a number of different claims that the city had against Hunter Properties over a period of months, and the settlement agreement was negotiated with a DeKalb County judge who signed the order. So, inserting another law firm at this stage does sound a little familiar to us in terms of our past experience with this property complex, and we recommend that we continue.
So, I absolutely agree. It's ridiculous to be inserting a new law firm at this point, and they've had plenty of opportunity to deal with this. Additionally, you know, as the notes in the agenda point out, if the petition is filed with the city clerk within 60 days of approval of the ordinance, signed by at least 51% of the electors residing within the special service area, it seems like there's another course for Mr. Bauer to take his grievance. I had one other question, and that is, in the future, should this SSA no longer be needed, can we remove it?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Anything else, Carolyn?
No, thank you. That's all.
Any other comments? Joe, if you come to the thing, to the microphone. Identify yourself, Reverend Joe Mitchell.
Good evening, Joseph Mitchell. A question, with this levy that's going to be handed down to Hunter Properties, is there any way to ensure that this does not become a pass-through to the residents of said properties by simply raising their rates or raising their rent? We know most of the people who live in Hunter Properties are not of the most means, and quickest way and the easiest way for Hunter to pay for this is simply to raise those individuals' rates. So, question for city council.
Excellent question, Joe. Does anybody have any response to that from staff?
Yes, there's nothing in the statute that would prevent the owner of the property from passing their cost in a tax assessment on to their rentees.
Thank you. Any other comments? We are still in public hearing? Yes, sir. Mr. Bauer.
So, Mayor, what I heard is responsive to most of what I stated or asked about, but I didn't hear anything with respect to the notice. Is my understanding correct that the notice that's linked to the agenda is the complete notice, even though it doesn't contain a legal description?
We'll have to look at your objections on the notice, and as another point, there's nothing here that's being approved tonight. This is just the public hearing to hear from people that would like to speak on this topic as you have, and there's nothing on the agenda here that actually needs to be approved, so nothing that really needs to be continued.
I understand that. I'm just looking at the special service area tax law as I speak, and it states specifically in section 27-25, "For purposes of this section, the notice shall include," and it begins, "the time and place of the hearing," and then item B is "the boundaries of the area by legal description, and where possible, by street locations."
I don't have that in front of me, but we will look at that, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bauer. Anything else? With that, I will close this public hearing at 6:24. Moving along, item I on tonight's agenda, considerations. Number one, consideration of a water department recommendation to eliminate the mailing of City of DeKalb utility bills to residential rental tenants beginning January 1, 2021, and instead mail all utility bills to the respective property owners. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you had a chance to look at Brian Favors' background, which is much longer than my summary, you will see what the root of the problem is. The municipal code has, for decades, stated that charges for city water will be made against the property using the service, which is to say that it's going to be mailed to the property owner at their place of residence. So, will be mailed to the property owner. But somewhere along the way, no one has a clear memory of it, maybe because some residents had said, "Look, my landlord is out of town six months out of the year. How do I know people are coming to turn up my water? What do I do?" So, we developed a system where we make copies to the tenants. And, of course, we have a lot of transient tenant, tenants? What am I trying to say? Leases, because we're a college town, right? And so, tenants come and go. The post office has been a factor in the delivery of notices always, and they have been dealing with notices to resident and not necessarily, or tenant, not necessarily the owner. So, tenants get these notices, don't know if they're actually owed, they're just copies. It creates confusion for the post office, creates confusion for people trying to pay the bills or not pay the bills. And it also has a cost to us. We mail out about $11,000 every two months, and just the cost of sending the duplicate notices to tenants is another $10,000 or so a year. So, now, at this point, we have a number of landlords who have said, "Look, just send the notices to us," and they've talked to their residents and tenants, and things have worked out fine. But there are still those, large and small apartments, where the confusion remains. And we would just like to clear the air, finally. We have not had residents coming to us demanding that they get copies, especially since they're already paying the bill through their rent, as is apportioned by the landlord. So, we're just asking that we stick to what it says in the municipal code. The reason we bring this to you, we could have just said, "Well, that's what the code says, we're going to follow that," but we realize there's a practice out there that some people may know of and some people may not. And we wanted to notice people so that we could start the first of the year in 2021 on the system that was set up by design to hold the property owner responsible in the event that the water bills aren't paid.
Yeah, this certainly made sense to me as I read through it, and I commend you, Brian, on your hard work on this, and Bill. And I take it that we, well, I ask for a motion and a second. I think we would like to vote on this. Hopefully, we have some consensus. This is not the kind of thing that normally, under a consideration, that we would vote on, but I wanted to make sure that we had a clear consensus that this was a good policy.
And credit to Brian and his staff. We're just trying to be transparent here. We want everybody to know that, many people already know this is a problem. If you talk to our county clerks who deal with this every day, there's confusion that they have to unwind every week, and they work very hard at it and very successful at it, but, you know, new people move into town, you start all over again, and it's a lot of extra time and work. So, we didn't want to just do it administratively and then have people call you and say, "What's the deal?" So...
Good. Thank you. Any thoughts? Alderman Morris.
I have one question. It looks like Brian Favors is there in the audience. I was asking him if it might be possible for tenants to view their account online, or if they'll be stuck to only view it under the property manager.
Carolyn, Brian is making his way to the podium now.
Thank you, Brian.
So, it is possible to view your account online, whether you're a tenant or a landlord. An account number is necessary to view that, though. So, the landlord would have to provide the account number to their tenant. Beyond that, though, the landlord could forward on the utility bill that they receive. You know, we have the ability to email utility bills, so a simple forward-on to an email address of their tenant is another way that they could view their utility bill as well. But everyone does have access to that, but you do need the account number.
Thank you, Brian.
So, are those account numbers separate for each tenant's base?
They are not, and that was one of the reasons why we switched, we're looking to switch to just having the bills go to the landlord, because one of the tasks that the utility billing girls have to do is new account setups. Every time you have a tenant move in, it's a new account number, it's a new setup. So, it's one of the things that we're trying to avoid in a, in a final bill, which is an additional reading for our staff to go out and do a final bill. So, we're trying to limit that time-consuming task. So, the landlord would have to determine whether that's something they want to provide to the tenant, but yeah, the, the account number would not change. So, that would be something that the landlord would need to be made aware of. And it's really not something that we're trying also to avoid, tenants setting up accounts in their own name. It's caused a lot of confusion for a variety of reasons, which I won't go into, but it's caused a lot of complications with our utility billing staff when tenants set up an account online to pay a bill online. It actually causes a lot of behind-the-scenes issues.
Thank you. Carolyn, does that answer your question?
It does, but I think, I think I can support this. I like that it's saving us, you know, $9,000 a year. I like that it's environmentally friendly, cutting out the paper trail. However, I think it's really imperative that as a city that we're very transparent with the tenants when we're sending this initially, so that they understand that they really aren't going to be able to view their bill at all. Because realistically speaking, if we're talking about, you know, 100-unit space or, you know, less, a four-unit space even, you can't, why would the landlord want to share that with their tenant? Because that would just cause confusion, and it wouldn't be helpful for the tenant in that framework. So, I just think that we need to be really abundantly clear so that tenants can understand what their rights are and what they do have access to and what they don't have access to. And so, there is going to be some trust needed between the tenant and the landlord, which we already have trouble with. However, you know, the bottom line is that we need to get the bills paid and we need to reduce costs. So, I can understand that and respect that. I just think that we need to be very clear with the tenant, explaining what their capabilities are and are not, so that we're not fielding questions explaining what they can't access.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Any other comments? Even though we only need consensus, I thought that it would be appropriate to do a roll-call vote on this. So, with that, roll call, please. Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Good. Well, that seems to give City Manager Nicholas and Water Superintendent Favors some clear direction, and I think to reiterate what Alderman Morris was trying to say, and that is, let's hope that we can rule this out with enough communication as, as possible so that everyone is fairly clear as to, as to how this is going to be moving forward on the 1st of January.
Mayor?
Alderman, yes, City Manager Nicholas.
Just in the interest of clarity for people looking in, because of what the council just voted, we will see that there is a, a notice that goes in the bill inserts in November and December, so people will also have some frequently asked questions, you know, "Why do I, do I have to do anything now? What happens?" Notice on all the utility bills thereafter for a while, and the department will also post any changes on our, on our city website, any other way that we can think of.
Good. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to resolutions. We have several resolutions tonight. The first one, number one, Resolution 2020-110, authorizing the award of a contract to Virgil Cook &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $155,431.70 for the installation of solar street lighting in Annie Glidden North, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total of $171,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Joanne Rouse is in the audience tonight. She's in the audience every council meeting. I usually sit in the back and just purposely is below the radar, but she needs to take a bow tonight because this is really big for the Annie Glidden North neighborhood. This is one of several things that have come your way, first in the way of amending the plan for the, the CDBG program for the year, which you've done. You've looked at several different ways in which the plan was modified, the one-year plan, the five-year plan, all following federal guidelines. But in this case, there's some COVID-related money that has amped up our allocation for the year, and there are a number of ways it could be spent, all of which very good, but a couple of things that are really needful, and after talking to school officials in recent months, it's very clear that a lot of people in the Annie Glidden North neighborhood in particular cannot use their computers, if they had computers. There's no Wi-Fi signal in many cases coming into their apartment. So, this will help. The lights will brighten the area, which helps a little bit with security, sense of security, but also the, the poles will have the Wi-Fi strung on them, and the city is going to be on the hook forever for the cost of that, but we're, we're, we think it's a very good investment, and we strongly urge you to approve this resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2020-111, authorizing a package liquor license with supplemental drive-through licensure for Haymaker Enterprises Incorporated, 1221 West Lincoln Highway. Motion, please. Someone?
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is probably familiar to those of you who've served on the council since sometime in 2018, and I realize that some have, have been, are newer to their positions, but the Haymaker Enterprises is, has a principal owner, which is Jeff Doby. We're familiar with Jeff as the proprietor of Fatty's Bar &amp; Grill on West Lincoln Highway, and back in 2018, the council approved rezoning and the possibility of a, of a drive-through liquor license for a facility that was to be built across Lincoln Highway, roughly across from Fatty's. For a number of reasons, this didn't come to pass, the construction didn't come to pass, and then about a year ago, an extension was given. We're up and really passed that, that extension now. Mr. Doby, before he applies for the liquor license and, and the gaming license and the drive-through and so forth that he had been before you a number of times with before, he wanted to, to know if the council would again be supportive of the liquor license in, in that format. And also, there would be commercial tenancies in the building, which were identified in your background report, that had been approved by the council in the past, and before proceeding, particularly in these uncertain times, he wanted to know what your thoughts were. So, we set it up as a resolution to more formally, if, if you are in support, to more formally secure that support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Moving right along, number three, Resolution 2020-112, authorizing a bar liquor license with supplemental licensure, licensure for video gaming for Haymaker Enterprises, 1221 West Lincoln Highway. City Manager Nicholas? Excuse me, excuse me, let me get a motion on the floor. A motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith. Now, City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you. This is, had to be taken in several pieces, different licenses here involved, and it's a companion to the, the piece you just approved. Again, Mr. Doby would like to, to move forward with the zoning and plan approval, but he wanted to know that you would be in favor of the liquor license. If not, there would be no point in him proceeding. And so, assuming that he would obviously have to comply with all our codes and ordinances like anybody else would, get a state liquor license and so forth, but it was established in 2018, and again in 2019, he would like to, at this last, this last, most recent opportunity, to get your support.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Now, we move along to ordinances. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight. Item L, ordinances first reading, we have two of those this evening. The first one, number one, Ordinance 2020-064, adopting a revised pay and benefit schedule for elected officials. Motion, please.
I'd like to...
Senator Fanouk, or Senator. Alderman, Senator, Alderman Fanouken.
Anyway, I'd like to move on this motion with a 10% decrease in wages or salaries for the mayor, the alderman, and the city clerk. The new rates being affixed as $19,800 for the mayor, $4,860 for each alderman, and $7,200 for the city clerk.
So, this is a new, a new motion on this ordinance, so this would amend this ordinance?
I guess that's what we...
Mayor, Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We, we need a, a motion to put this ordinance on the floor first before we do amendments, do we not?
Yes, I think...
That's what I'm trying to do, is put this motion on the floor.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor, as the ordinance has stated, is, has been moved by Alderman Fanouken. And Alderman Fanouken, if you'd like to amend that a little bit later, then let's, let's get a second, and then we'll, then we'll move forward. Is there a second on the original motion that's listed on our agenda tonight?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Now, City Manager, we got one person to speak to this, and then, Bill, I'm going to let you speak to it if you'd like. Bessie Kornopoulos, you'd like to speak to this, please?
This is not an easy discussion, I don't think, you know, for council to do, because much of what you do is for the care of the community. I, I don't think too many people having to do, at the very least, 20 hours' worth of extra work, not to mention weekends and other things that you have to read, and the unbelievable amount of work that goes along with doing what you're doing. I don't know if you could put a dollar amount on it. There's the philosophy of, if you pay more, you could have maybe a broader base of, of people, rather than folks that maybe might be able to afford to, to do it, you know, to do something for a lot less money. I, I don't know. I don't know if a dollar amount makes for a good alderman or a good mayor. It's up to the voters to decide, you know, if, if we can be fortunate enough to have people who are willing to dedicate their time and have the character to, to do the very best they can, that's the best that you can hope for. So, I'd be interested to hear what the discussion is going to be as far as that goes. You don't want to make it so that only a certain part of the population is able to, to serve as alderperson, because it does take a lot of sacrifice and a lot of time. The item that does concern me, though, is the clerk's position. That has been, there's not a single person on the council, for at least the last three, three councils, that really totally understands what the clerk's position does. And the people have voted, as you well know, about two or three referendums clearly wanting a city clerk in place, and the clerk is not just a minute taker, but is also a record keeper. At one point in time, they did the FOIAs, issued, helped with the issuance of liquor licenses and other licenses and so on. And that position can be reinstated to the point where it could actually be very helpful to the managerial staff, because it would take on quite a bit of the burden that's on, on the managerial staff right now. So, and that is, in essence, what people wanted. So, you really need to look back at that when you discuss the clerk's position, what the public clearly has wanted.
Thank you, Bessie.
You bet. Anytime.
Are, is there any discussion? We have the motion on the floor, and a second, we had public discussion for Bessie. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse, excuse me, what was that?
Carolyn, ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn, you got to speak up there. Don't worry about it.
Sorry. Thank you. I just hate interrupting. So, you know, this is really humbling to share about, but, so when I was deciding to run for city council, one of my first concerns was to do the math to see if the salary would cover the costs of childcare for each meeting, and I needed to know how much it would cost me to be on council. The community doesn't often know, but the salary is $5,400 a year, and after taxes, right now, it's $4,500 a year. With 26 council meetings a year, plus 12 council liaison meetings, time to prepare for meetings, respond to citizen email, hold ward meetings, as a single mother of four, understanding if I could swing this financially was a concern. While I deeply admire and respect my fellow council members who brought this forward, their intent to lead from the front with this, it results in inequality of opportunity for diverse council members. The sentiment of reducing one's own pay is honorable, and in hard times reasonable, but when the pay is subsistence level, that becomes less practical. Frequently, people in the community assume that as an alderman, we have offices, or we're full-time employees, but I just want to state for the record that this is not the case. We do not have offices. Our annual salary after taxes is about, is about $4,500 a year. The savings to the city by this 5% pay reduction is a total of $810 a year from the alderman's salaries, because we're only lowering the salary for three aldermen. With mayor and the clerk, the total savings to the city is $2,000, $2,335, which suggests that this is a symbolic gesture, which is nice, and I think very well-intentioned, but overlooks the fact that... intentioned, but overlooks the fact that $270 is very little to the city, but a significant amount to someone considering running for office, who has to cover their costs. Enacting this perpetuates the lack of diversity on council, making it harder for those who are not represented to be able to access a seat at the table, because the cost of doing so is increased. Last, I just want to point out that DeKalb's mission is to, quote, "deliver high-quality municipal services to those who live, work, learn, in, or visit our community." As the cost of being an alderman rises, you'll see diminished service and/or a smaller sector of the population who can afford to do it. The decision for the salary cut is a decision against equal representation. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Now, City Manager Nicholas, and then we'll open it up for further discussion on the original motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not and should not have an opinion on what you should be paid, but I brought this to you first initially in late July, because the Illinois Constitution and state statute prescribe when elected officials' compensation can be changed, and there's a 180-day window. And before we approached too close to that, we had a general council discussion, and at the time, this would be, this was in late July, the thought was that we would, that the council would stand pat on, on the existing levels of compensation for the different positions. And after the last regular meeting, it was approached by two aldermen who suggested that they, they would like me to bring forward the possibility of 5% reduction in those levels of compensation, and I did do that per our, our city ordinance. And so, I yield to you, this is your decision to make.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment, please.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion for a 10% decrease and to correct the dollar amounts that are listed in the agenda. If we go to a 10% reduction across the board, the mayor's salary will be affixed at $19,800. Aldermanic salaries would be affixed at 48, or $4,860, and the city clerk would be at $7,200 for total savings for the next two fiscal years of $4,620. The city is obviously in very hard financial straits with fighting COVID and with the loss of revenue, and we're asking other departments to hold the line, you know, to try and reduce expenditures. Overall, this would amount to a 7.1% reduction in elected officials' salaries for the coming year. And it would be then in effect for the next two years, would not impact anyone who was not facing reelection at this time.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, that we amend this ordinance with a change in the numbers that are reflected in the proposed ordinance that we have before us. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend this ordinance in the fashion outlined by Alderman Fanouken. Is there any discussion? Alderman Perkins.
So then, a question about process, then. So then effectively, half of the council will be at one rate, and half will be at another rate, correct?
That is correct. How the Constitution, local government act reads, that you cannot change the salary of anybody during the term of their office. So every two years, we have the opportunity to affect salaries. And in essence, for this time, it'll be, the top row here would be impacted, anybody who's elected to these seats in the next election, and the city clerk. The council members in the lower tier will not be impacted by this until they were reelected or a new ordinance was put in place two years from now.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I'd like to just add a few comments, if I may. To Alderman Morris's point, I wholeheartedly agree. I think what we want to try to do in this city is to attract folks who do not look upon being an alderman in the city of DeKalb as a hindrance to their ability to pay for childcare, to supplement perhaps an income that they have. I, I just think, and I understand the fiscal point of view, I really do, but I just think, conversely, this, by, by throwing those salaries back, and I'm talking more about aldermen now, the mayor, it's not going to affect me, it will affect the, the next mayor, but I don't, you know, the mayor, that, that, those numbers seem to, seem to be okay, in my estimation. But to cut our alderman numbers back that significantly, to me, just simply sends the wrong message. But I fully understand why Alderman Fanouken, you brought it forward. Yes?
If I may, there's precedent for this occurring in the crash of 2008, Alderatic and elected officials' salaries rolled back, rolled back at that time also. So there's precedent for the-
Oh, I know that, yes.
And I think with the financial constraints the city is facing, yes, it is pretty much a symbolic gesture, but if we're asking everybody else to do the same thing, I think it's appropriate that the city council take the lead on this.
Yeah, I think the fact that, to your suggestion, on top of the 10% decrease that was given to, by a past city council, to those salaries lends further credence to my argument that by continually chopping into something where people really have to look at that, you know, I don't think anybody gets into this business for the money, you know. I, I don't think any of us do, and I, and I, and I, and I don't think anybody ever has, perhaps, but I appreciate the, the sentiment, I appreciate the, the motion, the amendment, um-
Can I add one more thing, Mayor?
I just wanted to state my case. Yeah, Carolyn?
We have a precedent for this, and we're looking at a council who all looks the same. That is the precedent that we set. We're looking at, I am the one exception to an all-white male council. And I want to state that plainly. We have an all-white male council with one female who's white, and we have a precedent of having reduced the salaries in the past. And here's the result. We are watching the evidence of the result today. I'm, I am just disgusted with, if this goes forward, I'm absolutely disgusted.
Alderman Smith, and then Alderman McAdams.
If salaries were an issue, why at the last election were there not more people coming forward? Why, if that's the case, then we need to raise salaries. But people weren't coming out. I mean, I was asked to participate, and I did. It's not about the money. If we wanted more people, the last election for 1, 3, 5, and 7 was their chance to come out, but not that many people jumped in.
You're making my point, Alderman Smith.
No, can I finish, Caroline?
That's exactly my point, that the salary is so low that it's hard to do it.
You know, people should have put in. Are we going to raise salaries? What about the rest of the employees? What about employees that, during COVID, currently don't have jobs? I, I'm, you know, it's not about the money. You know, if I wanted more money, I mean, the hours I put in, I want a raise, a considerable raise. Clerk's office, by the way, Bessie, I take offense. I know what the clerk's office did. I worked here 30-some years. Okay? Bessie, I'm talking.
That's all I got to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman and McAdams.
We all forget that we are in the middle of a crisis that is not only a health crisis, but an economic crisis. And we're talking about shared sacrifices, and we're talking about doing the right thing for the taxpayers in the city, and we have to make the right decisions. Yes, would we all like a raise? Absolutely. Do we all deserve a raise? Probably. The amount of conversation that takes place, the amount of reading that takes place is a lot. But we didn't get into this for the money. We didn't, we do it because we love the city of DeKalb, and people will serve even if there was no salary. So I think it's very important that we look at the big picture, is that we are in the middle of an economic crisis in this country. There's 40% of the people in this city who rent are past due on their rent. That, that's a number that's statewide. And we have to be aware that while everyone else is cutting back and making the right decisions, we have to do the same thing here. I strongly support the, the motion on the floor.
Any further discussion? Now, let me try to framework, so we know, frame this so that we know what we're voting on. We are voting on an amendment which would change the numbers in the document that is presented in our background and in the original ordinance, which would reflect a 10% decrease in salaries for those aldermen, the city clerk, and the mayor who were, who would be elected in 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Smith, before I do roll call, I need for you to tell me who is the second on the amendment.
I believe Alderman McAdams.
Thank you.
Now, Lynn, if you would, Kylie, roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
No.
Mayor Smith.
No.
I have four aye, two nay.
That amendment does pass.
Mayor, at this point, we approve the amendment. I think the next appropriate step would be to approve the amended ordinance 2020-064 on first reading, as amended.
Okay, may we have that motion then to approve the motion?
I believe that's already been made.
It's already been made.
Yes, so we need to go to a roll call unless there's further discussion.
Mayor, what the city attorney said is, the next vote, if you want to proceed tonight, is to approve the ordinance as amended. So you're approving ordinance 2020-064 as amended, reflecting the 10% reduction on first reading, and then you can decide if that passes, whether you want to go to second reading.
Okay, I thought we had done that, but I would entertain a-
You just approved the amendment, sir.
Huh? Okay. I would entertain a motion then to approve the ordinance-
The motion's already been made, Jerry. All we need to do is vote.
I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any discussion now? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes. Yes.
Morris.
No.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
No.
Four aye, two nay.
That ordinance is approved on first reading.
Point of information, please. If I may ask, council, with only six members present this evening, can we do a waiver of second reading or not, or can we do four of six, or does it have to be six of eight?
Yeah, I believe you don't have a sufficient number of votes, as I count them to-
It's the corporate authorities.
All right, thank you.
So we would need to bring this back with the written amendment in the documents, so everybody has that version for a second reading.
For a second reading and potential passage. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, ordinance number 2020-065, authorizing boundary modifications to the area known as the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, Conserve FS. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. I do have one person who would like to speak to this item. Paul Borick, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a brief description to, to complement the city manager's presentation and the documents that accompany the, the ordinances. Conserve FS, a diversified ag products and services cooperative, needs to expand their 60-year-old Waterman facility that they have outgrown. They have a purchase agreement in place for 21 acres, and these, this 21-acre site has been annexed to the Village of Waterman with their board's full support. Conserve plans to build a dry fertilizer building, liquid storage facility building, and crop protection building and blending systems during the next two years. Most of their existing site and the 21, most of their existing site and the 21-acre acquisition are currently in the enterprise zone, but for a four-acre sliver in the middle that is required for some of the new buildings. With this expansion, Conserve will retain 14 full-time employees and 10 seasonal workers, and the expansion will enable them to increase to 20 full-time and 16 seasonal, roughly doubling employment. Long-term plans call for additional buildings, a large commercial fertilizer bagging facility, a new maintenance shop, and a larger office building. The Waterman Village Board was pleased to support the DeKalb Enterprise Zone projects and would be grateful for the city of DeKalb's support. And the Enterprise Zone Advisory Board, the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone Advisory Board, consisting of the DCEDC Executive Committee, together with the other designating units of government and participating taxing bodies in the enterprise zone, recommended approval of this boundary amendment. And as you can see from the material presented, there is ample available acreage for this modest four-acre expansion. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Paul. City Manager Nicholas?
I have nothing to add to that very thorough presentation, except to say that our staff supports us as well.
Thank you. Yeah, the economic development momentum continues in DeKalb County. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six aye.
I don't think we can waive second reading on this.
Yes, you can.
We can waive second reading on this?
Six votes.
Oh.
Okay. Is there, do I have a motion to waive second reading and approve?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second?
They're moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this tonight? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouk.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six aye.
That ordinance is approved. Now we move to reports and communications, allowing any of our city council aldermen, the mayor, and the city clerk, and the city manager to have any items they'd like to report. And we'll start with Carolyn Morris, our first ward alderman. Carolyn? Bill Fanouk, our second ward alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, you know, as we all know, the COVID-19 continues. Please continue to wear your mask as required. Also, there's free testing available the next two days at the rear parking lot of DeKalb High School. Try and support your local bars and restaurants through patio driving, and carry out this second shutdown of them has made what was a difficult situation almost untenable. Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
I'm happy to report that the mural project is almost completed. The artists believe they will be done next weekend or Monday at the latest. So I hope to have good news at the next meeting in regards to that.
I have several comments tonight. A couple of comments relative to our city hall family. Condolences to Streets and Facilities Superintendent Andy Rye on the loss of his father Kevin. And a speedy recovery to our sixth ward alderman, Mike Verbic, who is resting comfortably after his surgical procedure this weekend. For those who may not have filled out the 2020 census, a last-minute pitch. Folks can simply complete the form online. It's easy, quick to do. Those who have not yet responded, local enumerators will be working the neighborhoods through the end of the month. Kudos to those in our community who have been collaborating on the October 22 Belonging event, to be streamed live with special guest Dr. John Powell. Dr. Powell will be joining community members for a candid conversation about belonging and the actions needed to create a culture of belonging in our community. And that engaging virtual conversation, October 22, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thanks to Shaw Media for their support in assisting the co-sponsorship of NIU and the city of DeKalb. And I know those folks are asking for registration for this event at no cost. Registration can be obtained by going to the NIU website or to the city of DeKalb website. And finally, a reminder that DeKalb's hours for Halloween trick-or-treating will be on Saturday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. City clerk Fizikas, any report?
No report.
City manager Bill Nicholas, any report?
No report.
No executive session this evening scheduled. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouk.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six aye.
This motion is, or this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.